We rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public of the citizens of this nation, one nation, united as one. You can try that again.
We have to read it metro.
Yes. I am. Okay. I am reporting on the financials that I approved on Tuesday, April 5th, Resolution Number 16 dash zero three eight, and I was authorized to do so by Action Take Legend Commissioners. On that financial, I approved an appropriation transfer from the contingency account for individual dependent transcript fees for Common Pleas Court. There was a cash transfer from the general fund for a portion of 2016 county home funding. There was a contract for Meyer Design Inc. for playground resurfacing for the Board of DD in the amount of $49,992. Travel requests for the Auditor's Office, Commissioners' Office, Common Pleas Court, the Department of Job and Family Services, and the Department of Water Resources. Vouchers included a payment to Radningwood Center for the second quarter 2016 funding for the youth center, and there was a payment to Kent Marks Home Improvements for the Thompson Township Community Center rehabilitation project for the Office of Community Economic Development in the amount of $12,941.60.
The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of March 29th, 2016. Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the work session meeting of March 29th, 2016, and the Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the special meeting of March 31st, 2016.
I'll make this motion. Second. Aye.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Well, I think you have to abstain on a few of those.
I don't think I was here for all of these.
You were.
I was here for all of them.
You were here for all of them.
You and I were here for all of them. Ralph was missing for two of these.
Were you here?
Well, actually.
Or was he missing?
He was missing all of them. This one we didn't take a vote on, but for the work session.
So, I'm just saying, I hear a vote.
I voted yes.
Yes.
I was abstaining.
And I.
Yes.
Office for web check fees reimbursed and depositing to the general fund, and for additional appropriations for the Veteran Service Commission. Cash transfers out of the general fund for 2016 funding for the Family First Council, the Office of Community Economic Development, and the Soil and Water Conservation District. Travel requests for the Auditor's Office, Building Department, Crooked Courts, Common Pleas Court, Community Development, and the Department of Job and Family Services. Payment to Logos Communication for the AVP Department for a cloud managed access point in the amount of $7,438.83, and a payment to New World Systems for annual utility software agreement for the Department of Water Resources in the amount of $19,008.
Make the motion.
The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the Resolution 16039, itemizing the financials for the meeting of April 12, 2016. Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Okay. Now, I can report on the action or the items that I approved on April 8th, which was authorized by Resolution 16 dash zero zero five. There were two liquor license actions, so we concurred with Chester Township Trustee and not requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by Perry Group One Inc., DBA Perry Indian Cuisine. Also concurred with Chester Township Trustees and not requesting a hearing on the liquor license requested by Ross C. DeJohn Sons Inc., DBA DeJohn Funeral Homes. Also executed an agreement with Chardon Rotary for the requested use of the parking lot area at 208 East Park Street for the Maple Festival being held on April 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, 2016.
Next one, we are historical. We have a Historical Society.
Geogre County Historical Society. Okay, I'm Fred Green. I'm the new president of the Geogre County Historical Society, and I'm going to be presumptuous by handing out some items. Seventy-five years ago, in 1980, Bolton, our local Congresswoman came up with the money to buy the Eliar Hickox House, which became our first facility at the Geogre County Historical Society. That was 75 years ago. And last year, the gentleman behind me, Bill Jackson, our past president, actually went and did some fantastic research. Eliar Hickox, who built that house, wrote an autobiography that was published in the Georgia Democrat between 1869 and 1870, and Bill put together the several articles that comprised Eliar Hickox's autobiography, and I'm going to give each one of you a copy. But we're really proud of Bill's efforts because it gives an excellent history, a very excellent personal history of Geogre County, and I urge you, all three of you, to read it because not that I'm assuming you guys don't know everything about Geogre County history, but I learned a lot of new things in this reading of this book, and I'm finding that we do have a problem. Knowledge of Geogre County's history and knowledge of the Western Reserve Historical Society is getting dimmer and dimmer. When I was teaching real estate law, I would start out my class by asking my students, "Does anybody know what the Western Reserve Historical -- Western Reserve is?" Silence. "Okay, folks, you hear Western Reserve all the time. What is it?" They don't have a clue. That book clearly tells you some things about what the Western Reserve Historical Society is, so it's a great resource. Pass it around here among your family members. I think you'll find it's an excellent read. Eliar Hickox actually knew how to write, and I use our current rat card to show you our activities. I've also asked, we gave to you last year, I've got copies of our statistics, basically telling you how many volunteers we have, what we're doing. But let me start out with a very negative thing. We're having a hard time with it. Our salary costs, our fixed utility costs are continuing to go up, and our incomes stay static or going down. So, I know that you guys have been very, very generous with $20,000 a year. I would be remiss as a custodian and a president if I didn't get out here and I might bend a knee and beg for more. We're cutting it short. We have increased expenses and membership is down, so to correct that negativity, we're doing our very best to move forward, and I have to tell you that I urge you to come down and see what we're doing later this year. We're going to finish up our current project, the new apothecary shop. We're filling up an old building with, in the first room, it's going to be looking like it's exactly an old age apothecary shop. What's also interesting is the back room is going to be a reproduction of 1950's doctor's office for Dr. Corey, who was a famous doctor in Geogre County, and next to that, we've attached a shed to the building to have an authentic medicine wagon that was donated from the people from Rusbrug. So, and I've also attached here to what I just gave to you, I would like the Geogre County Historical Society to again enter people's minds as a county historical society more than just Burton Century Village, and I have a bunch of schemes. One scheme that's coming up is that in 2017, next year, we're hoping to have another Chautauqua event, which we had, what, about three years ago?
2012.
2012, where the state of Ohio sponsors a program where we have actors come out and portray different historical figures, and we have lectures. It's going to be a great event. All of this is to promote, one, Geogre County, but also to promote tourism. I think that the Historical Society's efforts and Burton Century Village are one of the greatest assets in Geogre County. Unfortunately, a lot of people, we find, "Oh, I didn't even know it was there." So, that's one problem. We need to market ourselves better, but we don't have the money to do it. We get a fair number of people to come out to our big moneymakers. We just finished up yesterday, Sunday, our last pancake breakfast. Toward the end of the year, in October, we have our annual apple butter festival, which brings in a good draw, but I think we need additional programs. I've got some ideas just to tell you that despite our financial emergency, we're moving forward. I think we're doing a great job using volunteers for just about everything, so I really enjoy working with all the volunteers, but we need as much help as we can get. And again, into my rear is Bill Jackson. I think you've met him before. He was here last year, and Marilyn Pickett is our new treasurer, so we're tightening our belts, doing the best we can, but we still need help. And I know there's people back here that want to keep on moving with the agenda, so any questions, gentlemen? I'm here to answer your questions if you have any, and I've got backup to answering other questions.
I thank you for all you do. Geogre County does have a very interesting history. I spent some time studying the history of Henderson Park recently, which is just fascinating. So, thanks for all you do and for this because I love history and reading about history and that kind of stuff, and I think what you do is a very valuable thing. Other than going over to the Burton Historical Society, it's a great location, great history.
Thank you.
One of the things in the process of working together is a county newsletter, so it'll be, you know, this would be something that would be a perfect example of, you know, being able to get your message out there that'll be able to be distributed to every household in the county, so.
Perfect. Thank you. That'd be great.
So, this would be something that, you know, would be a perfect example of something that we would be able to assist you with.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Number eight for the Board's consideration is to create a special revenue fund for the Veteran Service Commission. It's a donation fund to allow for proper accounting of revenues for donations. There's been some concern expressed by veterans if people want to donate for various reasons to the veterans, that there is no way currently of doing that because they don't have a special fund where those dollars can be maintained. So, by doing this, we can help out.
Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board to approve and authorize Geogre County Auditor to establish a new special revenue fund to be known as the Veteran Service Commission, DSC, donation fund to allow for the proper accounting of revenues and for donations received by the Geogre County Veteran Service Commission and the expenditures for the scene.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Aye.
We have a presentation at Mary Yoder's this morning, so.
With pancakes.
They're huge. Their pancakes are about that big. So, we're here this morning. We've been doing a contract each year with Geogre County Transit, and what we have them do is take a look at their operating costs and their fuel costs just to make sure that we're paying a fair value for our transportation services. So, this year, we do pay per mile, and what that pays for is our adult daycare, getting them to our senior center for their services, as well as bringing seniors to the senior centers for recreation and education. Most of those costs are covered through the grant that we get through Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. So, last year, we were paying $3.16 a mile. Mike looked over his costs against, you know, we're down to $3.07 a mile, so we're pleased that we get to pay a little less this year. And just last year, we started utilizing Geogre Transit to provide outings for the seniors instead of contracting with other companies, and that has worked very well. So, he does charge $3 a mile for outings because that's what the competitor was charging, so he did decide to meet that. And as far as outings go, just so all of you know, when they're going out to lunch or whatnot, our clients actually pay for their own transportation and the cost of the outing, so we're not asking taxpayers to pay for people to go to lunch or any other trip. We do roll that into the cost. Any questions?
Department on Aging is requesting the Board approve and execute a transportation services agreement between Geogre County Transit and the Department on Aging to provide the professional transportation services of senior citizens for the period April 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2016 in the amount of $3.07 per mile for services and $3 per mile for outings.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Aye.
How are you doing?
Thank you. Skip over, we'll call. Here with me just a second. Question?
They'll be here. I think they anticipate this stuff on longer. Moving along.
I know.
Is it be going or go back?
No. Go for it.
They're not that fast.
No, yeah.
They got that whole parking lot to crawl. There's traffic.
Thanks, Mike.
They gotta be safe.
Okay. This is to approve a part-time person, and this actually, there needs to be a drum roll. This closes by posting. This is a pretty big moment. Probably will change next week.
That's it? Any questions?
Yeah.
County Home is requesting the Board approve hiring Shannon Humberson to the position of part-time attendant, 1504-1, to be effective April 18, 2016, at a rate of $11.24 per hour and one year of co-pensionary period.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Aye.
Or Kelly, I'm not sure how you're dividing the.
Both coming.
You do the tag. If we're getting both of you.
Yeah.
You might want to tell her because she's remaining.
She was hoping for cake.
There is cake in the bag. There's rum cake.
Morning.
You can do first.
Oh, it's the CR. This is, remember, from last year, about the same time, we did Parkman's CR zone in Parkman Industrial Park, and those two buildings are almost completely done. I think they're starting to move a lot of product into them right now. But now, this is Burton Township, and Burton Township trustees, I went to one of their meetings, and they sent their resolution. All three unanimously asked that the Commissioners consider creating a CR zone for a section of Burton Township, the section that pretty much borders Middlefield Township, it looks like Middlefield Village, but it bumps right up against the beginning of western edge of Middlefield Township, and comes across 87, and it's a little bit of a cutout, cutting out the apron own land in this section of just past White Road. So, it includes the Berkshire Industrial Park, the Toot Road, Burton, Berkshire and Burton Industrial Parks, and then some of the industrialized land. They were considering going a little bit farther, but for right now, we're kind of happy with the selection they've made. So, this is the first step. This is a resolution that we will send to the state delineating this CR zone that's requested. This will only apply to new construction or additions to existing buildings, and it will only if the township and the county chooses will abate those properties that they want to abate. It's not a blank abatement. It's per case, so this is just the first step of it. We'll be back for progressive steps as we work through the process, so.
Okay. Any questions?
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute Resolution 16 dash 040, implementing sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 and section 5709.85 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of community reinvestment area CRA in the township of Burton, Geogre County, designating a housing officer to administer the program and creating a community reinvestment housing council and a tax and center review council.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Aye.
The next one's related to that, right?
It is. It's the fact that we have to advertise it once a week for two weeks, and then we'll come back with the next half.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise Resolution 16 dash 040 to create a community reinvestment area CRA in the township of Burton, Geogre County on April 14, 2016, April 21st, 2016, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
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 Number, the next one is for permission to advertise for Fonzie for environmental review for EEI Incorporated to, they want to purchase land and build a building, and we have to send this in stating that there is no significant impact on the environment. It's basically permission to advertise for that, we have to be put in the paper. And this again is step one of a project that we'll be coming back to for as we move forward through that.
Cool. Aye. Yeah. Fonzie.
I was waiting.
So, I'm sorry.
Somewhere down.
I'm sorry. It's just when you said Fonzie.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise the notice to public of a finding of no significant impact on the environment, F O N S I, and notice of intent to request a release of funds, N O I R O F, combined notice in regards to the EEI project, CDBG grant income revolving loan fund, to be advertised on April 14, 2016.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
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 And the last one is permission to advertise for a public hearing number two. We sent in the permission to advertise for public hearing number one several weeks back, and we're going to, we're going to hold two public hearings at the same time, basically public hearing one, then right after public hearing number two, so we get them out of the way. This for public hearing number two is notice that we are going to.
Apply for the EEI ED loan.
Yeah.
Grant loan.
We're going to apply on behalf, well, for EEI, for a economic development grant through CDBG funds, and this is basically just the permission to advertise. It's the beginning of the process. We have not applied for it yet.
We, yeah, but what would we apply for it? It would be for a grant to the county, which the county would then put in the revolving loan fund, and we would lend to the business, so it would still be a revolving loan. It's just that we don't have enough funds in the loan fund, so there's an avenue that we can have the money granted to the county and replenish the fund, make the loan that we were.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise the whole public hearing number two for the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Economic Development Program to be held on Tuesday, April 26, 2016, at 9:35 a.m. Notice this public hearing will be advertised on April 14 and on the county website.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner's Board.
Aye.
Aye.
Needed for you later.
Oh, here we go.
Dave and Jerry, would you mind coming up? Given the, I'm going to take a little bit of a detour here, given the focus recently on groundwater quality and so forth, and the work that we've been doing, as in the various individuals within the county, I thought it'd be good to have Dave, who is one of our subject matter experts, and Jerry, who's been doing a lot of work, and one of our subject matter experts, and Anita, who I talked to yesterday about the usage of the actual document that gets created out of this ground water thing.
Jerry, move up in the camera.
Come on. Get in the camera.
Come on. Show that all the Commissioners are getting you in.
I thought it'd be nice for them to come over, and we've been talking, the number of us, about this, and all of this has been publicly available. I update Dave on a regular basis, and David asked Dave to make a comment, has anything been untoward or not done appropriately and so on and so forth?
You've been doing independent research because you want to make sure you're making good fiscal decisions.
So, there's been some incorrect information in the press. Of course, the press loves salacious material, and they're irresponsible in that regard, in my opinion, but that's the press, and that's what we have to deal with, which is why I'm, while lukewarm on the idea initially of the newsletter, I'm coming around to supporting it quite a bit. But I thought it would be nice to have these gentlemen here because I, Wednesday, no, Thursday, at 10 o'clock, we're having a meeting of the subject matter experts to include Jerry, Dave, Bob Weisdeck, Martha Jaguki from USGS is coming up from Columbus, and we're going to have a conversation about groundwater. I've done enough analysis now to be able to ask informed, intelligent questions, and we can get all the people in the room who seem to have some interest in this. The Commissioners are welcome to attend. We can't, I'd have to ask you to be there as a participant or just a listener unless we make a public meeting, but, you know, I orchestrated this with the intent of getting as informed as we can, and I won't bias their opinions, but I've heard from all of the players that it's good to ask the questions that we're asking. There are, there's serious, the current system was designed 20 years ago. How do we know that that program fits the needs of today? Are we asking the right questions for today? Are we getting the value out of what we're spending today? And I think that there are very interesting things coming to the surface as a result of asking the questions that we're asking, and then we can determine at the Board where we want to take this in the future. And so, my intent was to gather all the information I could, bring all that to the Board for a discussion, but, you know, as the, there are some who want to make a political situation out of this. I don't play politics well. I'm a very plain-spoken kind of guy, and I work my butt off, as many around here will attest, to make sure that I get, I'm making informed decisions. And so, Dave, I had asked him to make a comment about what we're doing to see if he would, is in favor of it or not, so Dave, we bet I'm going to shut up.
Oh, I'm always in favor of more discussion, Commissioner, and I think that's where we're at right now. It's inconclusive, but we do have options that I think should be discussed, and we have a lot of great. And I think it's a healthy thing to do, quite frankly. I think it's an extremely important topic, and I do believe you agree, because about 95% of our residents and businesses depend on groundwater supply.
Well, and that's, and that's the reason that I brought it, sorry for interrupting, that's the reason I brought it up, because how do we know that what we've been doing gives us the answers to in fact protect us? Or is it just eye wash? Is it just something where every year we've done it, and so we're going to do it again, and has it really given us the answers? One of the questions that I asked yesterday, Dave, and I didn't really, I think both of us, kind of our minds were working on a little bit. We've discovered that there's some anomalies in the testing results that are going on. Have we done anything about it? Should we do anything about it? If we have a system and we're checking for something and we discover an anomaly and we do nothing, what value is the testing that we're doing? It's of this much value. Unless we have a course of action and can make a course of action, then what is the purpose behind spending the taxpayer dollars on something? And trust me, every dollar that we spend, every one of these reports, and Heidi and everybody else in this office know, but I look at every single dollar that flows through this office, and try to be as responsible and accountable to the citizens of this county as I possibly can. and try to be as responsible and accountable to the citizens of this county as I possibly can. Anybody that was seeing anything contrary to that, I want to have a debate and discussion with them. So I'm sorry to hear that. I'm kind of passionate about this, because I get ticked off about the press and their irresponsible behaviors.
Well, I think it's a good, healthy discussion to get them to have, and see where we're heading for the, look at the options.
Thanks.
I agree. I think it's a great, it's an option to look at the discussion and look at what are we doing. You know, most of what I'm seeing is, from the USGS, is water level. But there's not a whole lot of water quality associated with that. And it's almost, I kind of would say, looking at this as, this is an insurance policy. You've had the insurance policy over the last twenty years that you've been paying on that says, here's what your water level is, but you should take a look at your insurance policies and make sure they're covering what you, what you really need twenty years later. So that's, and to take a look at it and take a step back and say, are we doing it, are we, are we doing it in the right locations? And, you know, one thing that surprised me in looking at the USGS is that there was actually only one well that's being monitored in Russell Township. There's several in Bainbridge, there's several in South Russell, and several in Chester, but for some reason, there's only one in Russell. I don't know, I don't know about the aquifers.
We did that for various reasons. Because we wanted to have a countywide coverage within a budget that we could afford, if you will. So we did well selection in different aquifers throughout the county. I agree, we could have done a lot more.
Well, I mean, I agree with that too, but you're taking, this is the opportunity to take that step back and say, twenty years later now, does it make sense to only have that one well?
The other thing that's going on is there's a lot of testing and monitoring going on across the county that's being paid for by the taxpayers that we're not including in this. Middlefield's testing, Shartenfield is testing. We've got a lot of testing going on. And so, can we somehow bring that into this equation so we're not double paying for stuff? So that's part of the discussion. We're not going to solve this now. I didn't invite you guys in to solve this now. We're going to have this conversation, a broader conversation on Thursday. The reason I asked Anita to stay is, this is a question that I asked, I've been asking. Are we using the information we've collected? The USGS produces a very pretty book, and it sits on the shelf, it's got a lot of neat graphs and pictures, and it's actually pretty impressive. I've read it, and I find it very interesting to go through, it's fascinating to go through. But I asked Anita yesterday, based on a prompt from Dave, do we really use this? Dave says, Anita, we use this, right? And so I went to Anita, I said, Anita, we use this? How do you use this? Well, it sits on the shelf, and if anybody ever asks me, do we have it? I can say, yeah, there it is. That's how we use it.
May I add a little to that, though? Because I also said it's my reference material, but when I have a question, I walk out my door and twenty paces to Dave's office and say, Dave, what is... I'm probably not going to pick it up, because I have my font of information ten paces from my door. But, yeah, right, but I, that is what I said.
Yeah, when I asked your permission yesterday, I didn't want to put her on the spot. I said, can I, do I have permission to say what you said yesterday? And she said, yes. So with that said, if anybody's got any questions, other commissioners, you can, you know, feel free. I wanted you to hear from them. I want full disclosure, there's a meeting on Thursday. You're welcome to attend, or not. If you attend, as it's currently configured, because it's my meeting, then you will have to be a participant. If you want to make it a public session, I don't really care. We can make it a public session, and then we can, but let me just offer this. It will be, from my perspective, a work session. So there'll be no public questions, because we need to focus on the meat of the stuff between the subject matter experts to make sure that we're getting to the root of it all without the distraction of other folks interjecting and throwing in biased opinion and so on and so forth. So, got any questions, or anything?
No, a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I've been listening as closely as I can, and I want to compliment you on the fact that your entire presentation, you referred to yourself in the singular and did not include me in that conversation. I appreciate that, because that's the objection that one or two of you have had, or I've heard. And I have the quote from one of the periodicals or publications that apparently ruffled feathers. My entire gripe about this thing was that all correspondence or dialogue on this issue was plural. The commissioners are. And whether that's a Freudian slip, whether that's just a, whatever, I just wanted to ensure or point out that you can be the hero, you can be the devil, you could be nothing, whatever, I don't care. Just don't include me when you're making a statement when I had no input on that statement. But you were very careful this morning. I want to commend you on that, that you said what you're working on, you're doing, that's fine.
Mike Petzula was here this morning, and I didn't expect to see him here this morning.
Yeah, he sat behind me at that meeting.
He was at the meeting.
Yeah, he sat behind me. Well, he sat behind me.
He was at the meeting that, in which I was quoted saying that. Mike, did I say that in that meeting? No, I did not. That was the press misconstruing. And so, we all know that the press sometimes, you know, they have...
You're referring to the, you're referring to the comment that I brought up, which...
Yes, yes.
I believe, and Mike may have been at the meeting, and the press may have said that, but there were other people at the meeting who concurred with what was in the, the plural was said. I wasn't there at that meeting. I was at the next meeting where the Cleveland dot com put that in, and anyone that can take offense or exception at the comment I made probably needs to go back and review that. There was never any accusation made in that quote. That's the one that was in the latest meeting in Bainbridge. The prior meeting in, or was it Russell or someplace like that, I think. I was not at that meeting.
Right. Generally speaking, and Dave can attest to this, anybody that knows me, generally speaking, I may screw up from time to time, and I'm a human being, and, you know, forgive me, because I screw up. I'm not a perfect person. There's only one perfect person that I know of, and I'm hoping to see him someday. But generally speaking, I do not speak to this board, and I'm very cautious about that. It may have slipped out, I can't say, but I will tell you that that room was filled with people who have an agenda. It's a political agenda, it has nothing to do with this issue. I wanted to clear the air today, because this is important. It's important, number one, that this board has integrity, that people know that this board operates with integrity and above board, and we do not, we work real hard to, to ensure our, you know, separation. It's really hard to do sometimes, because it's hard for us to, you know, have discussions and stuff. We can't do it outside of this meeting. But when the, when we, when there's things in the press that get alluded to, then I get passionate about that, because it's not appropriate. And that's a very good reason for us to have a newsletter, because it is something that we get to produce to make sure that we've got correct information out there. And so, you know, how that gets done, it's going to get complicated and all that kind of stuff. But with that said, I really appreciate you guys being willing to come over and do this. I'm looking forward to the meeting on Thursday. Hopefully, we can, you know, make a decision, move on, do whatever we're going to do. I'm looking forward to meeting Martha. I've had many conversations with her over the phone. And, you know, we'll bring this to a conclusion, make a decision, whatever that decision is going to be, and hopefully, the county will be the better for it, because we'll have revisited this and come up with a better, with the right answer for now into the next, whatever, decade, fifty years, whatever it basically should be. So, I appreciate you guys taking the time.
Thank you.
Sorry for putting you on the spot, Anita.
Why you stayed over late and came at the last minute?
That's what you get.
And please pass our confidentiality card. I think I'm okay, so. Is it okay, huh?
Absolutely.
All right, moving on. Juvenile court, is there somebody here representing the juvenile court?
I was just talking about, where are we?
Number nineteen.
Where do you want to go? Oh, number fifteen. I don't know, you've all been, you were all set with our supporting documentation they provided.
I didn't see any issue with it, but...
No, I don't, they're probably, it's just a report. Yeah. It's just a, it's a first quarter reimbursement report, so it's probably just a recounting of actual reimbursements.
We've seen this before.
Right, right. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe this is a rate occurring. Do you want to go ahead and read it? We'll just...
Okay, I have... The Jogga County Juvenile Court is requesting the board approve and authorize President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Youth Services Juvenile Accountability Block Grant, J A B C G, J A B G, two thousand thirteen dash J B dash oh one four dash B two two two, B two two six, First Quarter Reimbursement Report.
Make that motion.
Fisher Reer?
Aye.
Fisher Spurrier? Fisher Claypool?
Hello, Glenn.
Morning.
Morning. How you doing today?
Well, I'm surviving. It's sun, the sun's out, beautiful day, no snow on the ground. Maple Festival's not here yet.
I'm looking forward to it.
Are you?
Because also it doesn't snow, so...
You can go up there to my place.
I like maple syrup, or the, what do they call it, the sugar when you stir it?
Stir, stir.
It's not good for me.
Yeah.
That goes on like a, at least twelve times. She can go ahead.
The next three is our maintenance for lawn care throughout the county, of the county buildings. We're pretty much right there, again, from our previous years. We did something a little bit different. We added in the contracts where if we want spraying done on our flower beds or anything, we kill and mulch, so they can come in and do the mulch job. Are we going to use it? It's there just in case for the next, so, these are for the next two years in the price of the fifteen thousand for the safety center. And that takes care of all that front big field in front of the safety center and all around in the whole works. The next one is for Department of Aging, County Home, the Vet Memorial, Pleasant Hill County Home, and Post Two. So basically, all of our property down there, so. And then the last one takes care of four seventy, the courthouse, and what we call the pit, two oh eight parking. We've got grass right up front there, so. And then right behind the annex, we have a small, you could probably put a billy goat out there and start to that. So that's for all that, I'll admit. Any questions?
That was all three of them, you explained it?
Yes.
Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with yours, yours, does that even say that? Yours Group LLC to perform lawn maintenance services at the Safety Center and Sheriff's Post Two for the years two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with yours Group LLC to perform lawn maintenance services at the Department of Emergency Services, Pleasant Hill County Home, Department of Aging, Ravenwood, Veterans Memorial, and the Pleasant Hill County Home Cemetery for the years two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars. Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with yours Group LLC to perform lawn maintenance services at the courthouse, two oh eight East Park Parking Lot, and at the four seventy Center Street for the years two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll make those motions. Second.
Fisher Reer?
Aye.
Fisher Spurrier?
Aye. Aye.
The gentleman with me is all Rick Weir names, a couple months ago. Got him up to the ground supervisor, so he's really stepped up and brought him in here to... I was going to bring him in here at first all by himself, and I was like, I can't feed him to the wolves right off the bat, so...
Yeah, we're bad. You can tell.
Yeah. So, but he's coming along really good, getting the contracts and working with the contractors and making them up and the whole work, so he's really stepped up.
So is he informed on...
It's that movie, he's got to figure out what I'm wearing that day, and then he comes in.
Oh, Heartbreak with Richard.
Yes. All right, thank you all.
Nice meeting you. I always liked that movie.
It's not clog. I stepped out and called to see if anyone was coming on this. I believe this is just a correction, or actually, to rescind the resolution because of some of the reconfiguration that the consent group is going through, needs to be corrected. But if you're not comfortable taking action on that today, we can wait until next week when you're certain it could be here.
I actually had questions on that. I would like to sit by the side.
Yeah.
I forgot to bring that up, you were coming in here. Prosecutor's office?
I previously submitted an application for outside counsel for the Jogga County Veteran Service Commission. They had requested opinion from our office, that I believe is... As the Board of Commissioners and the Veteran Service Commission was maybe in a bit of an adversarial situation with each other, and we didn't feel comfortable providing them with the legal opinion that they sought. Concerned, they sent you the letter, so I can talk about it. Concerned funding, apparently, they requested, I don't know the exact numbers in front of me, about six hundred and some thousand dollars in funding for two thousand sixteen. The board granted about four hundred and some thousand. I believe there was a two hundred thousand dollar difference in the funding, roughly.
We, the board had granted, I believe, around four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars for this year, and one at six thirty.
So, the opinion they sought was whether they could force you to provide them with the funding they sought versus the funding that you determined that they needed. Because they saw this heading towards litigation, I thought it would be better to ask them if they wanted that opinion to ask for outside counsel. They did ask for outside counsel. I submitted the application to you. However, it's my, you didn't really go over the financials in detail, but it's my understanding that in the financials this morning that you approved, you did fully fund their two thousand sixteen request. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just used to, you know, when I was here last month, you know, I was sandbagged and cross-examined for forty-five minutes on the financials, so...
Well, you're in reform this morning.
When this went so smoothly, I was a little confused, Kevin. So, okay, so apparently, you've fully funded their request for two thousand sixteen. In my opinion, that makes their request for outside counsel moot, so I would withdraw it if they're funding or granted. Any other questions?
No, I, just to correct the record, there wasn't an adversarial. We had a difference of opinion. Sometimes those differences of opinion lead to court situation. Now, see that as a, is adversarial necessarily, but we...
When they ask for X amount, you give them Y amount. They demand X amount and want a legal opinion and their own lawyer. I, I'm sorry, I kind of think that that's adversarial, but, you know, we can agree and disagree, so...
Well, we, we had attempted to gain some understanding of how the process typically works. We're well aware, this board is well aware of the funding requirements in the O R C, but the fact of the matter is, what they're asking for is two hundred and twenty percent more than they actually spent last year. Knowing that if we would appropriate whatever amount based on prior activity would be adequate to get them started, and knowing that if there's a real need during the year, this board's certainly going to step up and need everything we need to help our veterans, because I've never heard anybody feel otherwise. But the law gives them the ability to ask for funds considerably in excess of what they've ever spent, so those funds will be put in there. They're now not available if other things come up in the general fund. That money's tied up for the year.
And I don't have a dog in this fight. My, you know, my issue is, if we go to revise code, if there is a conflict and somebody needs outside legal counsel, then I have to, we have to jointly make the application, and I have to supply that and come to session. But again, if it's been fully funded, there's, the request is moved. But again, if it's been fully funded, there's, the, the request is, is moved and will be withdrawn, is withdrawn.
As, as a veteran, you know, I, I take an interest in this. At no time have the Veterans Services Commission come to us with a need that wasn't funded, with a need. When one looks at the financial statement from Veterans Services for last year, if they were to call me as a veteran on the phone and ask them for a donation for their charity, I would decline, because around ten percent of their budget went for Veterans Services, and around ninety percent of the money that they request goes for overhead. So if I was to get a call from, and I don't want to throw them under the bus, United Way Sisters of, whatever charity you want to name, and I did the research and found out that ten percent, approximately ten percent of my donation would reach the end user, I would probably be concerned about that. And that's what my concern is here, when, when we have, uh, people who are very well paid and can provide a service and do provide a service, but there's extenuating circumstances there, you know some of them. And, uh, that's, that's where the rift comes between at least this commissioner, me, and that agency, is, uh, show me where you're spending the money on needy veterans, and you won't hear a peep.
It, it, and I understand your decision this, this morning is, is not weighing their funding request, it's weighing, do, do we give them the extra money or spend money on outside lawyers?
Exactly.
So I, I, I get where you're coming from, um, and, and you've decided against spending money on outside lawyers, which I always commend, uh, 'cause outside lawyers are very expensive, and it's like making a big bonfire of money somewhere and just lighting it, so, um, no, I, I, again, not spending money on outside counsel's always a good thing, but, um, you know, that's the choice you were faced with, and since you decided to fund it, there's no need for outside counsel.
Right. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
You can be around later, Joe. I'll give you a call, something completely not really.
Okay. Is he a gold sponsor? Is he a gold sponsor?
A gold sponsor, what am I sponsoring?
Should I tell him?
Hey, at least I didn't ask for groundwater.
He had a fundraiser with the, with the dollar amount, and then on there he had silver sponsor with the dollar amount, and gold sponsor with the dollar amount, but no explanation of what you got for that. So I told him, well, does that mean if you're a silver sponsor, you'll return my call? And if you're a gold sponsor, you'll actually take it? That's the inside joke.
That was a little, that was a little harsh, but. He's feeling a little testy this morning.
Yeah, really. All right, moving on. Sheriff. You're looking, I can recognize you today, I can recognize, you had a uniform last night. I'll leave that to you.
Good morning. We're here this morning to ask the board to, uh, accept a grant that we've got that will allow three of our employees to go to the Ohio Attorney General's Conference, receive advanced training, primarily geared towards victims of crime, our advocate, as well as our investigator for Violence Against Women's Act, and the grant writer, our deputy who's assigned the task, Jeff Powers, of completing the paperwork, et cetera. The grant will pay, uh, all but a hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents, which will come, that portion, the local match, will come out of our law enforcement trust fund, which is, uh, that fund where proceeds from criminal acts, profits if you would, seized monies, things of this nature, is deposited, we're gonna use that money to provide the training.
Okay. No questions, Evan Smith.
Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the V O C A grant award acceptance form, grant number two thousand sixteen dash V O C A dash two seven four three four zero one six, for reimbursement of training expenses for three deputies to attend the Attorney General Training Conference in May, in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, seven hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents, V O C A funds, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents, local match, Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Dan, um, what would it take for me to take Alice training?
Permit.
Do you have any Alice training coming up?
I think so, but off the top of my head, I couldn't cite you, I do have individuals that provide Alice training.
Put me on the list, I'd like to attend one of those, Alice training.
Okay. Often Alice training is environment-specific, there's a portion that's classroom taught, and then a portion where I actually go into the, uh, students' work environment and help them with decision-making, replanning, uh, and that's aspect, but, yeah, we'll get you on the list.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, you've got the other thing now about when I enter a room, I'm looking for a fire extinguisher.
Get away, our secret.
Quite a list of stuff here.
Yes, uh, certainly, I'm running the gambit. Um, the first item on the list is that there's an agreement with Christine and Eric Wilson Thompson, uh, they are adjacent to the property where a wastewater plant is and their discharge line. The contractor subcontractor decided to use, without any approval from us or the contractor or the property owner, decided to use their driveway to run their heavy equipment down it to get it back to the discharge point. Um, they, you know, they did it when we weren't there, inspected it, so we didn't see it. They did it, uh, without their contract, they forgot to tell the contractor, forgot to tell the contractor that they were gonna be out there that day, um, they did damage to their, uh, thousand feet of gravel driveway. Um, and then later date, the, uh, even though the proper, the alignment was properly staked by a surveyor, they chose to put the head wall in a different location than where it was, and it happened to be just inside the neighbor's property, on Wilson's property. So, this is, we, we, we haven't yet, but it's going to be moved this week, the head wall off of the property, the property's gonna be, where the head wall is gonna be braved out and seeded. Um, this is an agreement with the Wilsons to settle any issues, we were, we offered to replace their driveway, they, uh, chose to say, no, they, you know, they'll, they'll hire somebody to do it themselves. So this is the agreement with that. There will be a, uh, corresponding change order for the reduction of the contractor's retainage for this amount, so this isn't coming out, this is, will be coming out of the contractor's pocket.
Much of what I'm hearing you say was, something was to be done, and it was done improperly or done, uh, haphazardly, I don't, you know. The people who are gonna come back out and move this head wall to a new location and so on, are these?
I forgot to mention that, that subcontractor has been thrown off the job.
Okay, this is a new outfit, so we could, we, we have to hope on good faith that the new person will perform the job without creating any more.
Yeah, well, and they've been notified that, you know, we need to be out there and I would, if, if not my inspector, I would personally be out there and make sure they don't, they, what they, 'cause they'll have to go on their property in order to grade it and seed it, to do it properly, but it will be done properly so that it gets done.
Okay, that, that would.
After the head wall got put on the, put on the wrong property, and there were some other issues that I ordered the, the general contractor to kick that subcontractor off the project. So we didn't have any of those issues.
Thank you.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute mutual release and settlement agreement between Christine and Eric Wilson on the Jogger County Board, and the Jogger County Board of Commissioners for damages caused to their property while work was being performed on the construction of the Thompson Township wastewater treatment plant in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Next item here is our coiling lift station replacement, this is, uh, down in our Scarsdale and Russell Township subdivision there, the lift station was put in back in the sixties, it's dilapidated, we're down to one pump in the, in the dual pump system, so it, it sur, it only serves, uh, I think it's, uh, eight houses in that, in that subdivision, it pumps up, it's the lay of the land, takes the low part, pumps it up to the high part, and then it flows down to our, to our treatment plant down at the bottom of the hill. The, uh, this, the, all of, all but one of the bids actually came in under the engineer's estimate on this one, so, and this was, Workman was the lowest investor.
Did you say how long this has been in place?
I was from nineteen sixties.
So it's, it's.
It's been a while, yeah. It's actually, the, the wet well is actually an old brick manhole. So it's, that will, you know, hopefully with this too, we'll get some extra, we'll get some extra benefit because it'll be a new concrete structure that won't leak as bad and we won't get as much I and I.
This ends up going to, to, uh?
To our Scarsdale wastewater pump. It's another one of our small planes, you know, that, that's just for the Scarsdale subdivision, I see. Actually, in order to get to the Scarsdale subdivision, you have to go through the village of Chagrin Falls to get to that, and the front half of that subdivision is in, is in Chagrin Falls, the back half is in Russell.
Oh, I see, Scarsdale laying right here.
Yeah.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board award the bid to Workman Industrial Service Incorporated for the coiling lift station replacement project in the amount of one hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. As they represented the lowest investment bid, good bond submitted shall be held to serve as performance onto this project.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Our next item is our lawn maintenance for all of our wastewater and water plants, um, for two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen. We went up the bid with this, and Fiori Group came in, they were the ones who actually did, did our landscaping last year and part of the year before, we had had a two-year contract with, uh, another landscaping company who failed to do, uh, the work in accordance with what they were supposed to do, so they were kicked off, and Fiori, uh, took over for them, they put the lowest bidder this year, so, for the next two years, sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty, two, two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Fioris Group LLC to perform lawn maintenance at the northern and southern locations within the department for years two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen in the amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars, sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Got one quick question.
Yeah.
Noticing that this is the same company that the maintenance department uses, um, do we do this jointly? Is there an opportunity here to do this jointly, and, um, it's the same company, so I'm just kind of curious.
Um, we've never, I don't know that we've ever looked into that, I'd have to check with our prosecutor's office, since we're not general fund, we're, we're the enterprise fund, if we can join those contracts together and do that bid, next time we go out, all is one.
I didn't know if there's any kind of leverage, benefit, pro.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know what, I don't know that we've ever looked at that as an option.
It's just a thought.
I think we, it'll probably give us a little more leverage because it'd be an even bigger project.
Well, and it may add complications, so, yeah, I'll just throw that out as something to think about all the way, because, uh, you know, we're, there, there's other things we might want to talk about on that too, so. Okay, yes.
The next item is, uh, we're looking to do a rate study for all of our service fees and, uh, that we charge within our department. The, uh, one of the things, as I took over as director, is reviewing our, our current rates and noticed that the last time a rate study was done for our rates was back in, uh, early two thousand, yeah, actually right into, at two thousand, um, and at that time, after a couple of years there, the, uh, study was done, and we did a, um, we had a rate increase that was, uh, on the sanitary side, three percent over a five-year period, which the last time that was, was two thousand twelve, um, and then water was five percent, but that was to keep up with Cleveland Water's five percent increase that they were, that they were had, so, this is kind of a, a way of doing our due diligence and reviewing this, since it's been sixteen years since it was done, take a look at it, and we're gonna look, have them, you know, be authorized to go ahead with, uh, contracting with, with Ref Pelus, um, we're gonna look at all of our fees. But the last time it was done, it was just done for the sewer, the service fees, and the, uh, the connection fees, but we have lab fees, and we have other fees that we charge for inspection and things like that that we'll have, I've looked, reviewed at the same time.
Are you going to have them look at this issue of excess loading fees? If we have somebody with the industrial complex with a waste treatment plant that is dumping into your sewer, our sewer, Mr. Sewer, and may have loading over what they agreed to, there's, there was a whole process and formula for providing a surcharge, is that part of this?
That, uh, that wasn't initially planned to be, it's something we could possibly add, but I know when we redid our rules and regulations last year, we evaluated several other, uh, sewer, ever, other sewer systems that had that kind of system, and that's what we included in our, in our.
All right. I just remember that being an issue came up and being questioned, so that somebody from the outside look at it.
Yeah. So this is just to be, to be authorized to start contractual, uh, work.
Negotiation with Ref Pelus Financial.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board authorize the department to begin negotiating a contract with Ref Pelus Financial Consultants Incorporated to perform a rate evaluation on charges for services currently being provided.
Excuse me, I'll make that motion. Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Aye.
Mr. Claypool?
Aye.
Our next item is just authorization to, uh, send the paperwork to Ohio Public Works Commission to be reimbursed for payments we've made on Thompson, for the funding that they're, that O P W C is providing.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the Ohio Public Works Commission Appendix E Disbursement Request Form and Certification Number Four for the Thompson Township Sewer Project in the amount of eighty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll make that motion. Second?
Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Sprecher?
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, these next two items are a follow-on to a previous action that came before the board. Uh, the state of Ohio, we, very recently passed, uh, legislation requiring counties to set up a volunteer police officer's dependence fund, and to establish a board to oversee, you know, the idea being to have funds available if volunteers that work with sa, safety services had, were injured or some other issue came up where they qualified for assistance, uh, that, uh, that this fund to be available, and you, there has to be a local board in each county to administer that. So the, the thought was, or the, the recommendation was, is that for the commissioners' initial appointments, it would make sense to have the auditor who would have the actual, you know, he'd be work, he'd be working with the fund, he would understand the basis under which the county is assessed how much you're supposed to pay, and then obviously, uh, the sheriff, because his department has a lot of those volunteers doing valuable service for him as well, so the suggestion was made that for your initial appointment. So the suggestion was made that for your initial appointment, that's you would appoint the auditor and the sheriff. And then the other requirements that the board acknowledge a posting, that there be a notice of election for other members of the board. Is that covered, Dan?
Well done, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, I have just one comment on this. We had a special meeting to go over this and I'm just going to use this as an opportunity to grandstand. I apologize ahead of time. This is a great program, something that ought to be done, and we had a great conversation about it. Our state legislators totally hose this up. So if the public wants to make any change, you ought to go out and beat up on Sarah and John and every other legislator. We could not have possibly made this more complicated in terms of how it's administered and set up. We're going to appoint two people who have to appoint three people, and it just is ridiculous, the way that this is set up. And so I apologize for grandstanding, but unless somebody says something about these kinds of things, they're always going to do this kind of stupid stuff. We have to start raising, in my opinion, start raising this kind of stuff up and go to our legislators and please, make things simple. This principle should apply here. It should be a whole lot easier for Sheriff Danny to get his volunteers taken care of, or any fire department or whatever the case happens to be. Having some complicated board in the middle of all this is, I mean, we sit on a lot of boards. I'm not impressed with boards. They're way too complicated. So that's for public comment, I know this is recorded, somebody may listen to this, the press is in the room, you may make some, you know, Claypool's ranting again or whatever you want to write about that. And Joe, in your case, have Ron Hill do a graphic, a little cartoon. We're sure. I enjoy those. It's very funny when he does those. I'm collecting those, putting those in my scrapbook. And so with that said, that's just my little rant on this. So this is a great thing to do, we're going to do it, I think. But I just have to get that out of my system a little bit. So we have got to change how we approach these things, in my opinion, so. With that said.
You're going to do twenty-seven, eight, and nine?
Yeah.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board appoint auditor Frank Leah to the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund Board for the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Commissioner's Office is requesting the board appoint Sheriff Dan McLellan to the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund Board for the term ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen. Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge the posting of the notice of election for the Volunteer Peace Officers Dependence Fund Board at the Jager County Sheriff's Office with the election to be held Thursday, April fourteenth, two thousand sixteen.
That's two days from now. Campaigning, you've got to get done in two days.
We have been moving forward anticipated.
Oh, okay.
So our membership is apprised of this. The schedule is set in place at this page.
Okay, I'll make those motions.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to comment a little on item number thirty.
Sure, go ahead.
This is a resolution proclaiming May second through May sixth as Public Service Recognition Week for two thousand sixteen. This is done throughout the state. I'm not sure, it may even be a national program. It's always done the first full week of May. And I guess what I wanted to just put out there was, you know, coming, having worked full-time in the private sector for thirty-one years for coming here. The perception I had was that public employees, county employees, didn't really work that hard. And so someone with that perception, because of lack of familiarity, might look at something like this and say, what is this, some sort of festival or self-congratulation? I can tell you that the people I've been working with here for the last twelve years are the most outstanding professionals I've had the honor, ever had the honor to serve alongside. Here, in all the departments and the commissioners' hiring authority, they don't get a lot of thanks, as I believe Commissioner Spitalary pointed out one point, significantly underpaid compared to their peers doing identical work, working for other places like other counties or the city of Charton. Sometimes you may have heard, sometimes elected officials get in disagreements with one another and the employees are caught in the middle. It can be extremely stressful. Despite all that, the people in this office, the people working in the commissioners' hiring authority, without question, without hesitation, are already stepping up above and beyond, working way beyond four-thirty, working harder than anybody that I worked alongside in the private sector previously. I worked in some very good companies for some very good people. These people here should truly be appreciated because they go above and beyond all the time. Thank you for letting me say that.
And I'll endorse that, speaking for Jager County. I can't so much look at other counties and endorse that as highly possibly. But here in Jager County, I would say we've got some really good employees and they work real hard and they deserve recognition. And this is a piece of paper. Hopefully we'll recognize them in other ways, so.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash oh-four three, claiming May second through May sixth as Public Service Recognition Week for two thousand sixteen.
Make that motion.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and I'll read the resolution just so that you hear what is going to be done, what we just passed. Whereas the men and women serve America daily as public servants at the federal, state, county, and local levels. The vast array of services provided by the government is an integral part of our lives. Every day of our lives, we depend on the work performed by public employees. And whereas public services are public trust, high calling and an expression of responsible citizenship. And whereas a job in the public service will impact the lives of many people through public policy, educational enforcement, and the environment. And whereas without these dedicated government employees at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas we, the Jager County Board of Commissioners, wish to proclaim that annually, first full week of May, be Public Service Recognition Week in Jager County and to call upon all citizens to recognize the contributions made by the public employees at all levels who help ensure the quality of our lives in this great country and in this great county and the state of Ohio. And whereas Ohio Advice Code three twenty-five point twenty-five specifically authorizes employee recognition programs now therefore being resolved. That this resolution become part of the permanent record of the Board of Commissioners of Jager County, Ohio. I don't know how many people actually know this. I found it fascinating when I sat in the office back here. We actually have books and shelves back there with all these meeting minutes on it. And they're, you know, like red-covered. And one of the jobs that the clerk, whoever happens to be sitting there, does is takes all this information, puts it into the meeting minutes. So it's very fascinating to go read, go back and read all of the meeting minutes going back to eighteen oh-nine or whatever. It's pretty interesting. Let me go ahead.
Commissioner, just so you know, we're in the process of catching up with the filming of those records. And the actual original book from eighteen oh-six at the start of this county is located down in the archives right on this campus, the actual original book. It's in a fireproof cabinet. It's safely filmed if anything bad should happen. But it's so fascinating, take that book out and hold in your hand something that old that details the history of our county. So I just want you to know we're in the process. Obviously, we have the electronic record, we have the paper record, but we're also putting it on film. We haven't done it in a few years, so we're catching up right now and putting those on film for the commissioners.
Periodically, I like to get out of the archives. It is, it is interesting to get out and read some of our past commissioners and some of the other past goings-on judges and so forth. And as much as we like to think, oh, we live in a time where we're so controversial, yada, 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 as much as things change, they stay the same.
Next time you go look at the road records, they are fascinating. If you look at the really old ones, about how the roads came to be where they are and why, and the commissioners had to grant permission for that, it's just very, it's very interesting reading.
Okay, with that said, we're going to, go ahead.
Commissioner's Office is requesting the board cancel session on Thursday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. And Commissioner's Office is requesting the board cancel session on Tuesday, May third, two thousand sixteen.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Squillen?
Aye.
Yes. In the meeting notices, the planning commission meeting scheduled for tonight has been canceled. It's going to be moved. And so I'm not seeing any other. The nineteenth, there we go, I'm seeing. With that said, go ahead. State your name, please, for the record.
Oh, Tom Jones, Auburn Township. I was at the meeting over in Bainbridge for the water.
Yes, you were behind me.
Yeah. And at that meeting in Bainbridge, you said the commissioners are dysfunctional. I just don't understand. You have equal standing with the other commissioners. You have, you can contribute to the agenda anytime you wish. What makes you think you're dysfunctional?
What makes me think the Board of Commissioners is dysfunctional?
Actually, I'm asking what makes you think you're dysfunctional? Because you're on the board, you're part of the commissioners.
I believe that quote was commissioners, which is plural. And the commissioners, plural, are dysfunctional. When we can't have discussion and get things moved through here efficiently, that is my definition of dysfunctional. You zinging me from the audience is interesting because you're here all the time. And if you think that the operation of this board is how it should be, this is how government works, then we're on two different planets, sir. But thank you for your question, I appreciate it. I'm leaving, I move to adjourn. I'm not done, we wanted to take some more questions. Why don't we go to Mike Petrazella in the back?
Mike Petrazella of Chester. Our government was founded on discussions and topics and disagreements. And you have to come together as a board and you may disagree. And the problem is, it's dysfunctional because you have people, and I don't think you're dysfunctional, I think you're doing your due diligence by talking about this. But you have an administrator who is supposed to be keeping everybody abreast of what's going on. And I think Dave has done a good job of doing that. And if Blake wants to say he didn't know about this stuff, then that's a fallacy. He should have, he should have inquired about it. So having said that, you know, I was at the water meeting and quite frankly, it was a political hack job that night. It was a bashing night for the commissioners. Quite frankly, I didn't appreciate it. As an elected official, I don't appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just looking at.
State your name, please.
Yes, I'm Diane Jones from Auburn Township. And as Blake has commented, we're here as often as we possibly can because there's much to learn. And there's much we don't know and we're desirous of learning more. And along that note, I'm checking down the meeting list here, and there was a reference made to the April fourteenth meeting with Martha Jakuki, Jakuki, pardon me. And so I wonder if the commissioners could fill us in more about the time of that meeting, since there are members of the public who do want to learn more.
Well, the meeting is going to be at ten o'clock. It's not an open meeting to the public. It hasn't been an open meeting to the public. It was going to be, intentionally so, and I am not embarrassed to say this. Sometimes when you invite the public in, you get distracted with the commotion that happens because people come with a agenda. And so we need to have a room which is, in which we can have an open, honest debate, discussion between the people that are in that room so that we can come to some honest, unbiased conclusions and some consensus possibly. And you know, sometimes it's hard for us to get into discussions because everything we say is in the public and it's hard for us, sometimes, you know, I may say stupid things. Believe it or not, last year I said a stupid thing. This year, I'm not so sure I've done that yet, but it does happen. And so we're all human beings. Sometimes we say something, we float a balloon, we float it to hear what other people think about it. Like Ralph brought up the idea of a newsletter. That was new news to the folks on the board. Good idea, I think. The more I think about it, the more I think, you know, it could have a lot of value. It's complicated because we have, you know, all these competing interests here on board. But it's hard for us to float those ideas, to debate and discuss those things out in the public venue because there's risk to us. Now, I'm a little risk averse. I know we're all going to be judged, that's the nature of things. That's the reason we took this job, you can't avoid that. And that just comes with what we're doing. But, so in a private session, we have more flexibility to be able to throw stupid ideas out and have somebody say, like, Dave Pedrick might say, Claypool, that's dumb. It's a little easier for me to take that if I don't have the press sitting in the room. And next thing I know, you know, there's this Claypool's dumb all over Chagrin Valley Times or whatever. And so that's the reason that it's closed. Now, the commissioners get to decide. I'm one guy, as much as I'd like to be the county executive, that ain't happening. And so the commissioners get to decide this. I set up the meeting, they're more than welcome to attend as participants. We're more than welcome to say, hey, we'd like to make this an open meeting. I don't really care.
Yeah, if it was a work session, that would be an open meeting. Because that's one of the terms commissioners can have outside of a regular meeting, they have a work session. If they decide that, hey, two or more of them wants to collaborate and come to some kind of consensus. What Commissioner Claypool is doing is he's doing due diligence and gathering information. So it's just a meeting, him and an area of special interest, and the other commissioners from time to time do the same thing. And kind of my role is, is that if I think, if they're keeping me informed, and they do, and it's going to lead towards something down the line where it may come as action before the commissioners, I try, to the extent I'm aware of things, to kind of keep the other price. Hey, this commissioner's working on this, or that commissioner's working on that, to try and maintain communication.
One more thing, Skip. I don't think this board is dysfunctional. I think the discussions that occur here, the disagreements, is all healthy. And the more disagreement that occurs, the healthier the board is. It's not everybody on, you know, my way or the highway. It's a healthy discussion between you, Ralph, Blake, and there should be dissent. If there isn't dissent, what's the purpose of having a board?
There's an old saying, if everybody thinks alike, then somebody's not necessary. One of the most frustrating things that I experience when I go to board meetings is that there is no discussion. The NOAACA is a perfect example. Because I ask questions at the NOAACA board meeting, I'm an outlier. I'm treated as an outcast and somebody, because they want a heard mentality. The director and the staffer in NOAACA brings in an agenda, they want that agenda passed, and ninety-nine percent of the time it's rubber stamped, and it just happens. How do the citizens trust in a system in which nobody is questioning and challenging what's going on? To your point, we have better decisions. When Ralph and I and Blake fight, we test things and ensure that, and the citizens get to watch that. And you get a better result out of that. So I don't fear the public, I don't fear the press. The press can beat me up all day long, it's okay. It doesn't bother me in the slightest. Actually, I think it's kind of humorous. And by the way, I have a cartoon coming to you guys that's being in production right now, so you're going to enjoy it. Hopefully you guys will publish it. But with that said, I think that that's right. We need more dialogue, open dissent, open debate on issues of all kinds because it leads to better decisions and it leads to better trust to the public. The public sees discussion, you know, if they don't see debate and discussion, if every time we come in here, it's just rubber stamp, rubber stamp, rubber stamp, then what do people think? I know what I used to think sitting in the audience. I used to think decisions are being made behind closed doors. Decisions around here are not being made behind closed doors. Now, we operate a little differently. We're not dysfunctional so much as our operating model is a little different. We each individually do a lot of homework, and here's my water file, so that we can each be confirmed that we're, we're able to come and have a good, healthy discussion here. So, you know, maybe I'm sharing too much, maybe I'm going on too much. But I am passionate about this. I ran to be responsible, you see my card, my campaign card, I ran to be responsible and accountable. I try every day to be just that.
Mr. Commissioner Claypool, one of the problems I have with dysfunctionality is what we have, this election just reaffirmed my belief that Mr. Spitalary and yourself, and now Mr. Blake Reer is going to be gone. and now Mr. Blake Reer's gonna be gone, you guys have been upright and forth, forthcoming with your conversations. Mr. Spitalary has retained his position, and Mr. Blair's, Mr. Blake Reer is not gonna be here anymore because the citizens understand where the diversity's coming from. He can't stand in the room with tape criticism, he gets up and leaves. I have a difficult time with that. He's an elected official, he should be honing up and taking the heat. If he's creating the heat, he should take it. He started the fire, he should see.
I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna tie him up. Blake was not in the room, but-
I would like to thank commissioners for all their due diligence on our profit project. Thank you very much.
Okay, I guess, when I adjourn, I move to adjourn. Thank you guys for coming.